Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Dearborn Board of Education, P-12. It's Monday, October 28th, 2018. It's 5:30. Oh, and here I see that our board president has arrived, so we're going to do roll call.
Yes. Hussein Barry here. Fadwa Hamud.
Here.
Mary Lane Zahner Way. Celia Nasser.
Here.
Mary Petrichoff.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
And just before the bell goes off, President.
(laughing).
He's here.
All we've done is called the meeting to order. So, next item?
Next item? We're going to go into action items then. You good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Action items. Special consideration of an action item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below. It's only the one motion item. Let me just get back to me. Cut off. (inaudible). Yeah. Okay. Good, thanks, Mr. (inaudible). Recommended action. It is recommended that the board approve a contract to train an amount of $598,000 for air conditioning installation at Salina Intermediate and a contingency amount not to exceed $59,800 to cover unanticipated expenses related to this project.
So moved.
Support.
Then moved and supported. Any discussion? Trustee Thorpe?
Growing up with asthma, I was always very keen as to what was going on with air quality around me, especially during times where it's warmer. So, knowing that there is a lot of problems with air quality in this Salina area, I think it makes sense to do everything possible to make sure that those kids have the cleanest air that they could have.
Anybody else?
I know that Mr. Nasser Baduun is here, and I want to thank you. And I know that this has, you know, we've been going back and forth to see if we can come to this amount for such, for such an important cause, right? And sometimes we were thinking, is it the right time? I know we have to put a lot of our own money now, but that little push, hopefully, it helped us and many students to make sure that we do have air conditioning in the school sooner than later. So, thank you for your investment, and it is, it was definitely needed. I want to thank the district for working with Mr. Baduun and A.K. Steele to make sure that we did come to this resolution. That was a very, very generous donation.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Baduun. Yes, sir. I was a, I was a little hesitant since I know we're going to be going into infrastructure information and knowing that, knowing that the committee didn't, you know, qualified air conditioning is very high. Not that it's not, but, you know, compared to everything else we need to do, but I do agree with Trustee Thorpe. I mean, we're taking the initiative for the water quality in all of our buildings. Nobody's forcing us. We're doing this on our own. And I think down in the South End, Salina School, air quality is very important. Trying to say that. And it's very, very difficult. Nasser Baduun did above the ante. It made it very, very difficult to give, for us to give up almost 30 percent what it's going to cost, so I am very thankful too, Mr. Baduun. Trustee Petlicov.
And I spoke on this when we initially were having the discussion about accepting the money at that point in time and, and my hope that we would be able to offset the school district's funding of it as much as possible. I do know that the Salina community has struggled with air quality issues for a very long time and that this is important to them, but I do want to emphasize that moving forward, I, I recognize that parents all across the district feel the same way about their children's health in all of the buildings, especially during the times that we have a high temperature in the buildings and, and these older buildings. And we also recognize that the expense needed to air condition the rest of the school buildings is just, it's not something that we can really predict our ability to fund moving forward in the way that we would like to. And I hope that the community members will understand that while we're accepting this donation that is strictly targeted at Salina School, that we haven't forgotten that they also struggle with the heat in, in their other school environments. They might not have quite the air quality issues that Salina has at this moment because of their proximity to the industrial area that they're located in, but quite frankly, that we will make every effort to make sure that their students also are going to be accommodated in however the best way that we can afford to do. But that this does not negate the fact that we understand that their needs also are important. It's unfortunate that we can't get these kinds of grants or, or donations to all of the, the rest of our buildings in order to supply them, but I, I am willing to move forward with this because you don't want to walk away from a substantial sum of money in order to provide those students at Salina with the air conditioning that they're looking for.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah?
Just a quick, a brief comment. Appreciate the board moving forward with this. We've been working on it a long time, Mr. Baduun. Thank you, Mr. Wall and Mr. Grzinski. And I do support all the comments board members said, and I did make that recommendation once we got the additional donation up to the 200,000. Also, just for the other parents in the other schools, we are moving forward with that plan with the 400, I believe, 50,000 for cooling stations, and we've already talked to the principals about that at the meeting in preparation for next spring so that they have plans to have students come in and out of the cooling areas that they have in their buildings as we move forward those. Now, that still will take a little bit of time, but we are cognizant of what you said, Trustee Petlicov, with, you know, all schools we're concerned for. And that way, at least we have a plan to help some relief regardless of what happens with the infrastructure, and even if we did, that would still be years down the road with the potential bond, so, thank you.
Are we ready to take a vote?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the, excuse me? I would say we don't need a roll call vote, so.
Right.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. All those in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Get unanimous. Next item, please. Summary of agenda item, action item. Approval of a, of a contract to train for air conditioning installation at Salina Intermediate. Next item is discussion. Item number one on discussion is infrastructure. Dr. Glenn Maliko.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wall and his team.
All right, thank you, everybody. Today's work session, we thought it'd be good to have actually some outcomes, so we had to look what we're trying to accomplish today. This kind of little background, this goes all the way back to the spring of '17 when we were talking about the past issue and which resulted in, you know, what else coming off the short-term plan of dealing with it, which the board addressed in the, or spring of '18, where we added the changing of staff from some of the Dearborn High and Forest and Staff or students over to that sort. And that is a short-term solution. At that time, we also talked about having a long-term solution. Come on in.
I don't think so.
Just keep talking. Keep talking.[564.41][564.41](laughing). All right, as part of that, we then decided to put together an infrastructure task force that started meeting in August, and they've gone through that process.
And you'll get the out, now that sounds much better. You'll get the outcomes today as part of the session. So, the outcomes that we set aside for this meeting is, the first one, that is a bond issue needed. So, as you go through, they're kind of keep that in your own mind of what we're trying to accomplish, that if you agree or disagree or how other methods you want to do, that a bond issue is needed. The second level, if we go forward with a bond issue, what's the funding level? Because obviously, there's different scenarios of trying to keep a no-mill increase type bond or look for a larger one or lower one. That's kind of the board's prerogative. And the timeframe. So, we look at it, when we actually go forward and actually ask the voters to actually vote on a bond issue. And the last one is, or the fourth one is talking about prioritizations. We have a lot of needs in the district. We can't afford to do them all. So, when you think about the discussion, you know, ask questions about what you think is the highest priority in your own mind. Now, today, we're not actually asking you to make a motion or anything. This is just a discussion to kind of get your information you need to give us the board or the administration directive on November 12th at that board meeting. Any questions on the outcomes? Okay, with that, we'll start with the presentations, and first is Mr. Bussler.
All right, good evening, everybody. So, we're just, wanted to start things off here by kind of giving everyone, giving the board an overview of, we're going to take you, you know, taking you through the presentations that were presented at the task force meetings, so condensing down a couple of months all within 20 minutes. So, we started off on August 1st, was the very first task force meeting. We started off with a little presentation, just giving an overview of the district. You're going to be familiar with, with much of this, but we wanted to make sure that those who are on the task force were also familiar with some of the basics about the district. Went over some of the things such as our points of pride, our graduation rates, the latest honors that we've received, district of distinction, some of those types of things. Of course, we talked about Becker being a blue ribbon school. At that time, we weren't, we did not yet have the information about the STEM Academy, or STEM School, middle school, and, and now we do know that they too have joined the ranks of blue ribbon schools back-to-back, two years in a row. So, we'll add that to our points of pride as well. And then we just talked a little bit about, you know, some of the programs that we offer in the district, you know, from preschool all the way through some of our early college programs as well. And then we talked too about just the size of the district. A lot of people weren't familiar with the fact that we are the third-largest district in the state, the number of schools that are in the district, and number of students, number of staff, and just some of the, the, there we go. And so, just some of the numbers that kind of make up the district and put in perspective what we're dealing with. I think it's very easy to, when you, when you come on to a big committee, a district-wide committee, and you're representing, whether it be maybe just a school or you're representing an organization that's within the community, you kind of sometimes can lose, lose focus of, of the magnitude of the district and just to some of the challenges that, that we do face. So, that, that's why we wanted to go over all of this, and it was part of that beginning presentation that talked about our district as a whole. And then we got into some of the areas which Tom, I think, will get into a little bit more as far as our budget, how big of our, our budget is, and where those dollars go throughout the district. And that's, and, and again, we wanted to give a, a perspective on, on that budget, so we got into a little bit on just the history of, of the foundation allowance in the district, going back to 1995, and then looking ahead to where we were projected for 2018, keeping in mind that this was information that was presented in, in August. And I'm going to think I'm, I'm going to wrap up my part here because as we move on, we get into more of the budget areas, which Tom will touch on in more detail in some of the other presentations that we also gave to the task force.
Do you want me to continue here or?
No, we'll call up yours. I'll call, I'll just call up yours.
So, and remember, this task force wasn't actually picked by the district or the Board of Education, where you reached out to all the community organizations that are involved in the Dearborn school area, and they got to choose who would be on the task force. So, it wasn't administratively driven. It was picked, you know, by where they would nominate people for. So, some of the people were very familiar with the district, almost daily-type activity, and others had really no dealing with the district outside of the fringe aspect of actually knowing that Dearborn was their school district. So, we really had to kind of go back and actually start at the beginning of looking at, on the finance side so they know more about schools.
Tom and each board member also had the ability to nominate one person, too.
Correct, correct. And I believe that you also got shared the whole list of people that were there for, who had attended the meetings. So, the first item was just talking about school funding in general, because when you look at our budgets, you see $300 million, but that $300 million is specified for a lot of purposes, and it isn't really meant a lot for infrastructure. So, we shared the model of the bucket approach of where all the money is in the school, so you can see the different type of funds that we have. Is that up on the screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just make sure. Then we got into the different dollar values of which funds. So, the general fund was $227 million worth of revenue, where 225 million were based on the actual daily operations, and talked about special revenue funds where that money is dedicated for that purpose only. The debt funds, which we actually raised money to pay back for old capital projects or bonds issues in the past, and our capital project fund, which actually funds what we do on construction, what we have available to do with our operating funds. Then we talked about where our revenue comes from. You know, 83 percent of our revenue comes from the state, so it's very legislative, politically-driven, a lot of times, that we don't control. And then our expenses, we're a service industry, so a lot of our expenses are on salary and benefits, and that's roughly 85 percent of our program. So, the other 15 percent is what we got to do with everything else in the district, dealing with supplies, for utilities, and so there's not a lot of money there for these kind of capital improvement programs we have for our buildings. Shared the historical approach, you know, of how our funding has happened over the years. Our foundation allowance history, showing where we, since proposal started, we were doing very well, when the economy was well, but as we hit that recession in 2009, you can see where our funding dropped, and we had to readjust to that. And when that happened, we explained to them that the money that was available, that 15 percent shrunk quite a bit, and we weren't able to keep up on our infrastructure needs, so that kind of put us behind on our process, too. This is just a pictorial showing the red line is our salaries, the yellow line is our retirement costs, and the blue line is our revenue stream. So, you can see over time, our revenue stream is not keeping up with our expense side, so therefore, that's creating an operation issue that we, again, can't afford to keep up on our infrastructure. And stop me, but I'm going real quick here, just, this, a lot of it is recap for you. So, when we try to look at a capital program, there's only three types of bonds we can level. There's a voted approved, which we have done in the past. Most recent as 2014, we went to the voters to ask them to levy a mill to actually raise a certain dollar value that was roughly around $70 million. You have non-voted capital, which you have also done in the past. Back in 2007, we did that for some of our athletic facilities, when we actually did the three high schools athletic fields. And then you have conservation bonds, where you actually do a bond to actually do energy savings. So, those are the three types of bond programs that are available to schools. You also have some millages you can look at. You can have a building and site sinking fund for up to three mills for 10 years. That's kind of a pay-as-you-go type approach. However, the revenue you can raise is much smaller than you can with a bond program, so it actually expands the life of how to raise the funds for what you need to get done. And then a rarely one uses recreation and playground, which you can do infrastructure things and actually salaries out of that one, where it has to have some sort of recreation program aspect to it all. So, you can't, it's a little limited more in scope. So, when we looked, we actually talked to them, what are we doing now? Right now, we have 4.82 mills that we levy for debt purposes now, and I also shared what our tax base is, because we're going to start leading them down the path, what does a bond issue actually cost the homeowner? So, here's just a look at why do a bond issue versus sinking one, what's the advantages and disadvantages. Again, with a bond issue, you're liable to get a larger capital funding upfront, and so you have the economy of scales and things like that, where a sinking fund is more as So, the average housing value in Dearborn, as we went through our capacity study, was 131,000, so that means the taxable base is 50 percent of that. And so, we looked at that and tried to figure out what would our current millages for our dead properties would cost a home of, rounded down to 125 for math purposes. So, it'd be about $602.50 annually what current homeowners pay on their tax bill for debt. And so, that was our starting point. This is just the definition for a bond issue from the state, saying what we can, so we had to make sure that they understood when we deal a bond issue, it cannot use, be used for salaries and benefits, so you can't use it for some other purpose, because that's always a concern, that if you raise this money, that the board might do something different with it, so it's, it's a legal process of what you can actually use the funds for. And so, looking at that, we looked at three different scenarios, of a three, four, and a five. The three is looking at a no-mill increase of keeping the 4.82 mills constant and looking at our current taxable values in the current market. We can raisely, raise around $207 million on a no-mill increase bond, and that would be over the length of 23 or 25 years, roughly, depending on the taxable values. The second scenario, if we actually looked at a half a mill increase, would raise $234 million. A full mill increase, going from 4.82 to 5.82, would be 261 million. So, we're trying to give them a range of what kind of dollars we could raise and what the impact is to the homeowner. So, on a scenario three with a no-mill increase, that $602.50 would remain $602.50, so there is no increase to them. On a half a mill, it would go up to $665, so roughly about a $63 increase. Now, one mill will go to $727, which is roughly about a $125 increase. And why do something now? Obviously, the market is very good. If you pay attention to the news, you'll find out the interest rate is creeping up, which in turn will then obviously increase the interest rates. So, the longer you wait, obviously, the cost of the interest borrowing is going to be higher. And also, the economy's on an upturn, so as we wait longer, the cost of construction is also going to rise for that cost. And so, we took a step further, because after we had that informational on the, the funding side of it all, we wanted to give a little more background on how a bond works. So, we just took it through a short presentation of looking with a bond. Again, there's the definition of what a bond is used for. So, anytime you do a bond, obviously, there's costs for actually issuing the bonds, so there's obviously a one and a half percent of the cost is actually going to legal fees for the underwriter, for the selling of it, for the legal review, all those kinds of costs. There also, anytime by Michigan law, when you do a, a construction project, you have to have an architect involved, and that's roughly around 6% of the bond cost. And then you also have your construction manager, because obviously, school districts don't have the staff to run that kind of a program of that scale, so it's anywhere 7 and 9 percent of the cashed cost of the bonds. So, the idea is when they look at it, they understand that, you know, even though you're saying as a no-mill increase is 207 million, you're going to have slightly less than that by those percentages, what actually you have to do with the actual construction costs. So, just so they would understand that. Again, that was actually looking at, just on the right, is an estimate of actually the 207 million. You'd be about 172 million of actual construction costs of whatever that 207 you actually get to use for actual building costs. Now, that number will be slightly higher in this scenario, doing it to get too complex, because there are actually interest earnings you would add on to that based on the current funding, so it'd be closer probably to about 180, 185 after you add the interest earnings, because you don't spend all that money in the first day you actually get it. It's over a series of three to five years. And so, we took them through that process, they asked questions, we had roundtable discussions, and that was the financial aspect of it all. So, in the fourth session, Shannon?
Mike.
Yep. We, we, one of the things that we had roundtable discussions about different areas, and those presentations are in your packet also, but we, there was a lot of questions still about what is capacity, well, how does that address and what the needs are there. So, we had Ms. Peterson look through and give a short presentation about our secondary level and the capacity and what we're trying to accomplish.
So, in the presentation, we showed where our students are, how many students in each high school were enrolled in the Dearborn Center for Math, Science, and Technology, Michael Berry Career Center, Magnet, how many students we have in the Collegiate Academy, and how many students we have dual-enrolled. And you can see that we have 812 students currently dual-enrolled, which is our largest number of students involved in something. So, then where are all of our students? So, for Dearborn High School, first hour, it shows that there's 1,858 students actually in the school versus, go all the way to sixth hour, 1,829 students in school, and it fluctuates. They, the, the principals did say, when they were here last spring, that third and fourth hour around lunchtime is where they feel the congestion, but it's still, once we add the classrooms at Dearborn High, we're going to feel just a little more relief and be within capacity. Atso Ford, anywhere from just under 1,400 to just above 1,300, depending on where the students are enrolled. And then Fortson, Fortson has the largest number of students at Michael Berry. They have the largest number of students dual-enrolled. So, first, the morning, they're quite heavy, almost 2,500, and in the afternoon, we get sixth hours as low as 1,950-ish students in the building. So, for Michael Berry, we discussed, I worked, I talked with Winifred Green, the principal, and Dr. Barrell, what programs do we have there and what programs are they proposing? So, currently, we have hospitality studies, health studies. The allied health program has grown in the last couple of years. We have the Business Academy and Design Technology. They're hoping to add Construction Trades and Criminal Justice, Teacher Cadet, EMT Basic Licensing, and AP Computer Science and Coding, and these were not only from what students want, but also they have a advisory committee with businesses and what they're recommending as well. And this is the enrollment analysis of Michael Berry. So, you can see that Fortson has had the greatest increase of students enrolling in Michael Berry, and that's mostly because of the academy focus. And then we shared another graph that just kind of split up the growth. So, you can see that Fortson has the, the largest number of 10th graders that are actually going over there and getting involved. Interestingly enough, we had a contingency from Italy come Friday and to see Fortson and to talk about how we work with students, and there happened to be a group of students in the cafeteria after school, and when they, the Italian congregation asked them what their most, you know, what their favorite part of school was, they went around, unprompted went around the table, it was Michael Berry, dual enrollment, the Collegiate, Collegiate Academy, Michael Berry, dual enrollment, the Collegiate Academy. Those were what the students really talked about was their favorite part of being a part of Dearborn Schools. It wasn't lunch. It wasn't lunch, isn't that exciting? And then we shared the space at the Heights Campus, because that is where our Michael Berry Career Center is. We currently have 70 classrooms there, but they are split up between the different programs, and you have that information as well. We talked briefly about the academies, because we know that there are some concerns about what the academies means, and it's really giving students a focus for their education, and it's allowing students at an earlier time in their high school to try different career areas and learn through a lens of something they're really interested in. I often said if my little police officer was, went through school, through the lens of a police officer, I might have had a valedictorian on my hands, so it really increases relevance to the students' lives. And then again, these are just numbers. We had a little quiz. About 271 students are at Michael Berry in the morning, 258 in the afternoon, 230 in the Collegiate Academy, and 31 in our Magnet. If we add to early colleges, we will need 12 more classrooms over three years at Henry Ford College, so six for the coding and six for the teacher. That's it.
So, we've actually made up some time. So, we're actually now on to the update of the task force, and Mr. Weiss will start us off.
Thank you. That's me.
Thank you. Thank you, it's a pleasure to be back. I'd like to first introduce Dr. Greg Berisi, who's part of our team at the Metro Bureau, is in the audience, and also introduce Dr. Nancy Campbell, who was not able to be with us tonight. She came back from a vacation with a horrible bug, so it's probably better for all of us that she's not with us, but they're part of our Metro Bureau Brain Trust and have various levels of participation in the task force meetings. So, I want to begin by telling you just a couple of things. First of all, our job was to make sure that every task force member, and we had 41 members, that they understood what their charge was and what their charge wasn't. We were dealing with specific areas to address for the district, not everything in the district. Our, our charge was limited to safety and security, to infrastructure, to a capacity, and also We were dealing with specific areas to address for the district, not everything in the district. Our, our charge was limited to safety and security, to infrastructure, to a capacity, and also, the air conditioning question. That was our area. So, we defined that early on, and it was revisited at every meeting. The other thing that I want you to be aware of, although we had 41 task force members, we never had 41 present at a given meeting. Life happens. People have activities. The people that are on the task force have other things. So, we had built in a catch-up program for people that missed meetings. Tom Wall and I showed up early on a regular basis, about a half an hour early, and we sent notices out throughout the process that people who missed a meeting could come in and get caught up. So, we made, you know, reasonable efforts to make sure that everybody had the information to make informed recommendations, which was really what we wanted the end result to be, a series of informed recommendations to the board. But it was also made clear to the task force that those recommendations were just that, recommendations. You are the deciders, not the task force. The other kind of recurrent theme was about thinking globally. We're not here to decide what color you're going to paint this wall or whether you're going to carpet this room or that room. We're here to give some general recommendations and allow the board and the administration to do their job and identify the particular details that they choose to address. I think I have. Got it. Okay. So, the charge of the task force, and again, this exact same slide was one of the first slides at each meeting, and again, just a summary. As far as the individual meeting structure, we knew that the, in order to make an informed decision, having 40 or so people in a room and getting them to agree on something can be a tall task. So, we wanted to make sure that they had plenty of practice working with conversations at their tables and the entire room in situations where we didn't all agree automatically. Air conditioning would be an example. We had all kinds of opinions on air conditioning when we started. When we concluded, we had one statement that everybody could support. So, to make sure that happened, we periodically, as I said, reviewed the charge. Each meeting had a list of three or four goals that we began with, and we were hard to make sure we accomplished those in the two-hour segment that we were allotted. Each member was provided with an agenda with approximate times. A big part of what we did included table talk. We were in this room with roundtables. The tables were from four to six people, and our average attendance was probably between 25 and 35 people at each one of the meetings. I think 25 was our lowest. And then, finally, each meeting concluded with a closing activity, and this was a consensus building activity. Each table had to agree on three things that they learned that evening and one question that all, that everybody at their table had that they needed an answer to in order to proceed with their recommendations. They turned those in. We collected those, and then, I, we processed them, and we sent them over to the Dearborn staff, and Tom Wall, I think, was the person, the lucky person who was charged with determining the answers for all of those questions. And then, the subsequent meeting included in the packet, a summary of all the things learned and the answers and the questions that were asked at the prior meeting. So, again, making efforts to keep everybody updated, making sure that they had answers to the questions that, that they had. The other thing that we did regularly was define what consensus meant, and this was an operational definition that we used. While we may not have 100% agreement, consensus means we will all agree to support. So, it's finding that common ground and building on that common ground, and that was the working definition that we used throughout the six meetings. Again, we practiced consensus regularly at every meeting, and by the third meeting, we began working on some major consensus items. We weren't sure when that was going to happen initially, but by the third meeting, we were pretty sure that the task force was ready to begin building consensus. All the items had been discussed. The task force had been through all the presentations and gained all the knowledge that we knew they needed to have in order to make informed recommendations and build consensus. So, then, in summary, meetings one through four were about learning, learning what they needed to know, getting questions answered, receiving information from experts, and I will say that the Dearborn staff was superior in terms of having the right people in the right places with the right information to answer questions. And, you know, we know that the task force, by, by the end of the third meeting, they really felt like they were a part of something that was a good thing, that was really happening. So, meeting four was our field trip, our building tour. Meeting four was time for people to visit the buildings because I think everybody on our task force had limited exposure to the district and the facilities. So, the steering committee created a building tour process that would enable everybody who came to that meeting to see the newer buildings, the upgrades, the nice new bright shiny objects that were available, along with the older buildings and the not-so-much older buildings, to see that all of the buildings and really clearly, and this was in, in the summary that we provided to the board, all the buildings were well-maintained. It wasn't a question of looking at buildings that on the surface were falling apart, but we know, we could see very clearly from those tours that there was technology, that there was safety, that there was, just looking at the, the way those buildings used energy. One of the biggest ahas for everybody was looking at the boiler room. We started off looking at the boiler room at Lowry where each boiler was not quite the size of a locomotive. I mean, these are big things. And then, going to a newer building and seeing, seeing a boiler that could basically fit into a closet and do the same job, you know? Big eye-openers like that. They saw the differences in the size of classrooms, old buildings versus new buildings. So, by the end of that tour, they were ready to do some serious prioritizing. So, the next thing that happened was we did some dot activities. In our first prioritizing, our, going back and reviewing the four areas that we were tasked with looking at: capacity, infrastructure, safety and security, and air conditioning. By this time, we felt the committee was ready to determine what our top priority should be, what should be number one, what should be two, three, and four, because we know that we're going to have whatever revenue source the board approves, it's going to be a finance, a finite source of revenue to do this work. And the district, in order to get things accomplished, would have to work within those means. Therefore, the task force should not go for a pie-in-the-sky approach. So, each person got four dots. A green dot was for your first priority, a blue dot your second priority, a yellow dot your third priority, and a fourth dot your fourth priority. And being fourth priority does not mean it's not a priority. All four of these areas are priorities, and we emphasize that with the task force, but it's just a time to look at things relative. So, if you're like me and you look at this, this poster where the dots were, it's difficult for you to see some takeaways that I wanted to make sure everybody saw. So, what we did was we looked, we created a bar graph from this, and to me, that's a lot easier. Some of you may have gotten a lot more from the dots than I would have gotten looking at that, and I knew that there were people on the task force that are more like me and people that are more like you that like to, to look at the dots. So, this was just another way to look at things. And then, finally, we looked at the takeaways. So, clearly, from the activity, our first priority was infrastructure. 80% of the task force members, 80% of the green dots landed on our first priority, on infrastructure. The second priority, which surprised me a little bit, was capacity. Forty percent, 47%, almost 50% of the blue dots landed on capacity. Third priority was safety and security, also at 47%, but the difference here is that 47% of the yellow dots ended up on safety, security, which is a third priority, going back to the second priority, 47% of the blue dots there. So, that, that's how we distinguished, even though the percentage was the same. And then, finally, 86% of our red dots were on the air conditioning. All right? This was really essential information. So, the second priority prioritizing activity was to take a deeper dive in capacity. So, we kind of defined capacity as creating the physical space to meet the learning needs of our kids. And within capacity, there were really three burning issues. There was the issue of building a new high school, which I know your community, your educational community's had discussions on. There is the issue of freestanding ninth-grade academies, pulling ninth grade out of the nine-through-12 configuration. And there was the, the capacity issue of expanding secondary options and post-secondary options for students, and you can see the results. Now, in this activity, every, each person only got one dot, so they had to really choose between the three and say what was their top priority. And we clearly had a majority there. Oops, I keep using the wrong one. Again, looking at the bar graph, probably not as, as critical this time, but clearly, the priority was the expansion of early college and using the Henry Ford College campus and also the academies. So, our takeaways from this: unanimous support for expanding secondary and post-secondary opportunities, no support at all from the task force for building a fourth high school at this time, no support for expanding the freestanding ninth-grade academy. The third prioritizing activity: revenue source. And you see this as a little more mixed. Again, each person got one dot, and as Tom mentioned, they were given three options: a tax-neutral approach, a half-mill increase, and a one-mill increase. And I'll tell you, we had a lot of really pointed discussions about this. People felt strongly about being tax-neutral and the value of that. People felt very strongly about adding money and trying to get everything that we wanted. But prior to doing this activity, we made a list of needs and wants for the district. And again, that was done as a table talk, and then, as a whole-room, it was consolidated. That was done just before the tour, and what we found out was that our list was really pretty well-aligned to what we saw on the tour, which told us that the task force members were pretty well-prepared for that, and by this point, pretty well-prepared to make an informed decision on consensus. So, just wrapping up this last dot prioritizing activity, here's the bar graph, and then, finally, the takeaways. 68% of the task force said tax-neutral. We could support that. 23% would have preferred a five, a half-mill increase. And finally, 10% thought a one-mill increase would be the way to go. So, we knew we were going to have some consensus issues here. And finally, all four priorities cannot be accomplished with a tax-neutral revenue source. So, again, that was the value of them prioritizing the four areas, knowing that we could get probably anything we wanted, but we probably couldn't get everything that was on the list and stay tax-neutral. So, moving along, we began our last, and this happened at the fifth meeting, we began our last meeting with some consensus activities. Rather than start from scratch and create consensus statements, we created templates based on the conversations that we've been having with the task force. And at meeting six, what we did was we would, we would flash a consensus statement. Each table would have a discussion, and their charge was to say, "Do we need to edit this, or is it okay as it is? And if it's okay as it is, can we all agree on it?" Well, so, we had five consensus statements. I think we ended up editing three of them. Two of them were accepted as written. What you're seeing next are the final consensus statements. All right. Is there consensus that? Task force members agree to support a tax-neutral funding source for areas prioritized in later consensus statements. And this is, again, the final draft, not the draft we presented, and we had 100% agreement from the task force that they could support this as a consensus statement. Second one, is there consensus that? All task force members agree the first priority should be infrastructure in order to find, to provide facilities, all facilities, with a safe environment that meets the learning needs of students. Again, this was the edited version. Everybody could support. Number three, is there consensus that task force members agree the second priority should address the district's capacity in a way that is driven by instructional needs, flexible design? This was huge, flexible design, and cost, knowing that things change over time. The goal would be to expand secondary and post-secondary learning opportunities such as career and technical education, AKA CTE, and early college. Consensus statement number four: task force members agree the third priority should be to address the district's safety and security needs with secure entry systems, cameras, hardware, and related software. And consensus statement number five: the task force members agree the fourth priority should be for the district to continue to address the need for air-conditioned spaces on a funds-available basis each year. So, continual progress over time. If there wasn't enough money left over to air-condition everything, clearly, they wanted to, a progression with the money that was available. And then, finally, as far as affirmations and recommendations, and I'm going to introduce some of our task force members in a moment, I will just tell you to set this up. So, we, our, our last task was to take those consensus, consensus statements and turn those into recommendations for the Board of Education. Again, keeping in mind, they're recommendations. I will tell you that we started with draft recommendations, and we started with five recommendations in our draft. After the table talk and everything else, the task force came up with four recommendations, and that's what you're going to hear tonight. And at this point, I would like to introduce our three task force members that are with us tonight. I'd like to introduce, first of all, Judge Miriam Bazey, also Mr. Tom Trimble, and Ms. Donna Stanley. And if you three could come up, and they're going to present those recommendations to you. You have to kind of share the microphone.
And first, just Miriam Bazey. I'm here in my individual capacity. So, the first two recommendations were, one, it will be necessary for the Dearborn Public Schools Board of Education to seek voter approval for, for a bond in order to finance necessary capital outlay projects. Our second recommendation to the board was specifically, the district will need to finance improvements in four areas which are prioritized below. First priority is infrastructure, and infrastructure includes technology, interior and exterior upgrades to facility, envelopes such as roofs and windows, interiors, physical plants, site improvements including athletic fields, as well as transportation.
So, do you feel fairly certain? Because I know when we, on the last task force, some of the concerns were that not everybody really was given the opportunity to express themselves so that it was a fair shared experience and, and that what was presented to the board was one that really demonstrated everybody's wishes.
Yes, I agree because at each meeting, we had table talk. So, that was a chance, so if you didn't want to really say anything in front of the 30 people that were here, you just had to say it in front of your four people, which I know at my table several times, there was big debate. We were both back and forth, back and forth, showing good, bad, you know, the pros and cons of what it is, and I felt comfortable changing my answer sometimes or with the answer that was come up, that came up with. I feel that we were all heard, especially since we were asked questions at the end of each meeting, and those questions were answered at our next meeting. So, I think that anything that anybody, if you didn't want to say anything in front of anybody, you had the opportunity to write it down, and then, those questions came back to us with the answers.
And I, I just want to add also, we started out by, with a lot of ice-breaking exercises. So, we got to know each other so that we wouldn't have those issues, being uncomfortable talking to each other, and that really helped being able to have kind of a more... And that really helped being able to have kind of a more open dialogue with people that, for some of us, it was the first time we'd ever talked to them. And so I felt, I think everyone walked away feeling heard, as far as I understand, we, it was a pretty, the group got along fairly, pretty well, actually, probably one of the best task force kind of I've been on in terms of being able to talk, share your opinion, have your thoughts recognized, and kind of have that open and honest debate. So, agreed.
Trustee Thor.
When I look over the list of people that were part of the committee, there was about 40 names, about half of them I identify as being employed or formerly employed by the school district. With those types of weightings, and there was about 30 people, it looks like, that participated in the ranking of the four different areas, did you feel that the people that are currently connected with the school district were dominating the conversation, directing, giving direction as to which way they would like to see things going? Do you think that people not in the district were being heard?
Do you want to answer?
I did, as in, I don't work for the district. I very much, I was very impressed by the employees of the district's ability to listen and to hear folks, and to be very patient, even when it came to, you know, I had some very basic questions about finance or facilities. And so I was really impressed by that, and I would certainly, this goes back to that last question as well. I thought the table talk was great. It seemed like people were very comfortable at speaking. I think the facilitators get a lot of credit for that. None of the agendas were overly packed, which can sometime crowd out voices and crowd out introverts from having a role in the conversation. So I thought there was a lot of pacing, strategic decisions there, that I thought really facilitated great conversation. And the rapport at the tables, I think I was at three or four different tables over the course of the series of meetings. I thought there was a lot of openness and consideration there. So every once in a while, I would have suspicion that, you know, there was theories about what should happen, but I thought, employees kept those very close to their vest, I thought. And I thought much of the conversation was very open, and like I said, I was very impressed by both facilitators and the folks who work for the district.
Those that work for the district, none of what they would say about something seemed like they were trying to change our mind. They were just opening up our minds to what they see every day. We don't see what they see every day. So it was nice to get that, but they never pushed us in, well, this is the way it should be. You know, it was very, done very, very professionally, and it was nice to hear what administration had to say about their buildings.
Thank you.
Trustee Nassar.
Within each of these subgroups, say, infrastructure, for example, was there a list of priorities within that? So if you say the roof on Lori, for example, needs to be fixed?
Short answer is no. The only exception is capacity. Within capacity, we had, we had three subgroups. We had the secondary and post-secondary opportunities, early college and the academies. And then we also had the fourth high school option and the freestanding ninth-grade academy option. Otherwise, and part of our charge was, again, keeping thinking globally. So even though we looked at buildings, the tendency was to say, you know, Lori needs a new cafeteria, or Lori doesn't need a new cafeteria, or we want Lori to look more like another building, make it that way. So we had to kind of rein that conversation in a little bit, to say that our work was really not building-specific. It was about providing the optimal learning spaces and making the environment safe and secure and warm, and in some cases, cool, so that students could learn and teachers could teach.
Trustee Bear.
I'm very thankful, all three of you and the whole entire committee, all my colleagues covered most of my questions out there. I do have a question, I don't know if it's Mr. Wall, it's Ryan who's going to answer. I know Ms. Stanley said that this would be on next November's elections. Do we have any other ballot issues next year? Is there an election next year?
It's an off-year for the legislative elections, but this does not mean there might be local elections for different items. The actual filing timeframe would be around the May-June timeframe, we would actually know for sure, but at this point, we don't know of anything that's out there.
If there's nothing else that comes out, obviously, you know, we would have to take up the tab.
Correct.
My main concern would be, is this is a huge decision, you know, for a governance race or even a presidential race, you know, turnout's all. So for something that's just a proposal, go out for a bond, that might be dangerous to vote, representing that type of community. So that's something that we need to think about.
And just a point of clarification, on the dot activities, like you said, we didn't have all 40 there at one time, but as part of the catch-up at the last meeting, those who weren't present for the previous votes did get to vote on the dot activities at the last meeting. So it actually does show a full 40-person vote on the dots.
You may have already said this, but what is the timeline, if we're going to go to the people in November, what has to happen prior to that?
Well, that's something we'll talk about after our break. So we do have a presentation to show, or at least a tentative timeframe to show you what the next steps would be as we go forward.
I just want to thank the entire committee, I want to thank the parents that came today, Donna, Tom, Miriam. I want to thank the co-chairs, Tom and Dr. Josh Tynan, and then, of course, Carl Weiss, but the entire committee. And I know I felt that was at the PTA council meeting, I heard you speak, and then there was somebody else who spoke too.
Tim.
Tim, yes. And it just felt real positive, like I feel, and I know it was a lot of time, all of you, you know, away from your families. I also recognize that you saw the importance of this for the future of your children, but beyond even, you know, for the stability of the district. So I just want to commend everyone, we heard about our employees, and thank the board for allowing us to take this time and to give me the direction to allow this committee to come together. I can tell you, the committee spent many, many hours in the conference from planning. Mr. Weiss came, Dr. Berisi as well, I forgot to mention him, but thank you. They spent a lot of time over a very short period. So I want to thank all of you for your time and your dedication to the betterment of Dearborn schools and our students' first vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize, everybody, for being late. You know, I have a planner. It would be nice if my Reddit function locked.